possessing a firearm under eighteen United States Code Section ninety-two G three. Aliens who are illegally or unlawfully in the United States or who were admitted under non-immigrant visas and who are prohibited from possession of a firearm under eighteen United States Code Section nine twenty-two G five. Persons who have been discharged from the United States Armed Forces under dishonorable conditions. Persons who have renounced United States citizenship. And persons who have been convicted in any court of a crime of domestic violence designated as a Class D or E crime or an equivalent crime of that jurisdiction. Title fifteen MRSA subsection three ninety-three specifically identifies persons who are prohibited at this time by main law to possess firearms. The law states as follows. A person may not own, possess, or have under that person's control a firearm unless that person has obtained a permit under this section. If that person has been convicted of committing or found not criminally responsible by reason of mental disease or defect of committing a crime in this state that is punishable by imprisonment for a term of one year or more. A person has committed a crime under the laws of the United States that is punishable by imprisonment for a term exceeding one year. A person has committed a crime under the laws of any other state that in accordance with the laws of that jurisdiction is punishable by a term of imprisonment exceeding one year. A person has committed a crime under the laws of any other state that is classified as a misdemeanor but is elementally substantially similar to a crime in this state that is punishable by a term of imprisonment for one year or more. Person has committed a crime under the laws of the United States, this state or any other state, or the Pasamaqoty tribe or P'Nopscot Nation with the use of a firearm or any other dangerous weapon against the person. Has been adjudicated in this state or under the laws of the United States or any other state to have engaged in conduct as a juvenile that if committed by an adult would have been a disqualifying conviction. A person who is subject to an order of a court of the United States or a state, territory, Commonwealth, or tribe that restrains that person from harassing, stalking, or threatening an intimate partner of that person or a child of the intimate partner of that person. Or from engaging in other conduct that will place the intimate partner in reasonable fear of bodily injury to the intimate partner or the child after a hearing in which the person received notice and had the opportunity to participate. This bill will provide law enforcement the ability to ensure that persons found in possession of firearms after being prohibited to do so will be held accountable and punished accordingly. I believe it is time to incorporate federal law into state law which will lead to a far more meaningful deterrent to prohibited persons from possessing firearms. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in support of LD six hundred. And I would be glad to answer your questions.
Any questions for Representative Pickett? Senator Chisowski?
Thank you. Senator, did we ever perform some federal law on these issues? Not to my knowledge, never have. Thank you, that's right.
Senator Burns?
Senator, I think Representative Pickett, what is the difference now? Do we have parts of the whole entire domestic violence, various Class D, Class E? What's the difference now?
The Class E or D crimes right now that you cannot, that you cannot be able to possess a firearm, there's any crime, a criminal threatening, you know, any crime at all that has this aim to be involving domestic violence between intimate partners or whatever. And right now, in our court, there are crimes that are looked at in that way, but I believe in federal law, I believe it is spelled out clearly that if you are involved in those kinds of crimes that you would not be able to possess a firearm.
Any other questions for Representative Pickett? Sina.
Thank you very much.
Are there any postices that would like to speak in support of this bill? Sina. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this bill? Is there anyone that would like to speak in the board or against?
Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. My name is Stacy Carter. I'm the police chief of the town of Romford. I am here today to speak in support of LD six hundred in act to reform main law regarding persons prohibited from possessing firearms with federal law. LD six hundred conforms main law with the federal statute. Several components of the law are already the same. What's missing is several categories of prohibited persons that are not currently listed under state law, as Representative Pickett had addressed. The most important for me are those convicted in any court of a crime of domestic violence. As we work to enhance other laws around domestic violence to make it better and a little more safe for victims, we need to focus on taking away firearms, the leading cause of death, or serious injury from abuses. I get several requests each year from NCI as the National Incident Criminal Background Check System for convicted persons attempting to purchase firearms. These purchases are ultimately denied due to their criminal record or there are numerous other private sales or possessions that are never checked. Although these persons are prohibited federally, they are not prosecuted and the firearms are not removed. We already have in state law that none of these prohibited persons can obtain a concealed weapon permit, but we do not have a mechanism to take the firearm away from them at the state level. State of Maine is also rapidly changing with the growing amount of illegal substances falling into the state by out-of-state drug traffickers. This illegal flow of drugs is also creating a serious drug problem in our communities. Many of these drug traffickers and addicts are in possession of firearms. The approval of LD six hundred also prohibits persons for unlawful uses or addicted to any controlled substance which as a result prohibits them from possessing a firearm. Thank you for allowing me to testify in support of LD six hundred. I respectfully ask for your support moving us through the law.
Thank you. Are there any questions to Chief Carter? Senator Burns?
I do just in case, Chief, can I ask you regarding the last part of this bill, Class D or E, as you allow, we don't already have that provision according to that, or you buy federal law?
Any other questions? Sina, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of LD six hundred? Anyone would like to speak in opposition? Sina, either for nor against? Anyone from the department that would like to speak on LD six hundred? Sina? No one from the department? Okay, thank you for your time. Okay, we're going to move on to LD six fifty-two.
I know it's been a long day, so I will be quick in my testimony. So Senator Rosen, Representative Powell, and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety. My name is Senator Eric Braekey and I represent the people of Auburn, New Gloucester, Holon, Minnetonka, and Kennet Falls. And I am here today to present LD six fifty-two, an act to allow concealed carrying of handguns without a permit. It is possible, you may know this bill by another name, it is popularly known by several other titles including constitutional carry, permitless carry, and Vermont-style carry. Simply put, this legislation seeks to allow law-abiding citizens who are already legally able to own and carry a firearm, the right to carry a concealed handgun without a permit. This bill does not make any changes to Maine's current concealed carry permit system as is currently written, other than making that system optional when carrying concealed within state borders. As we consider this proposal, it is important to leave the concealed carry permitting system in place as are many who will still seek a permit for reciprocity with other states. Several states are already constitutional carry states, including Vermont, Alaska, Arizona, and Wyoming. And I don't have in my testimony, because I wrote this a couple weeks ahead of time, Kansas just signed constitutional carrying law within the last few weeks. Many more states are currently considering becoming constitutional carry states, including our neighbor New Hampshire, which has already passed this legislation to their state senate. At its heart, this bill is a very modest proposal. It does not change in any way who can carry a firearm. If we pass this, every single person who is currently prohibited from carrying a firearm would still be prohibited. It does not change what kind of firearms may be carried. Every firearm that is currently prohibited would still be prohibited. It does not change where firearms may be carried. Any place where it's currently prohibited, it would still be prohibited. The only change this legislation proposes is how a handgun, and only a handgun, may be carried. We are simply allowing a legal gun owner to carry while wearing a jacket without a permit. Legally, there are two ways you can carry a handgun, open and concealed. Currently, anyone who can legally purchase a handgun can already carry it as long as it remains visible. That is open carry. The moment you put on a jacket that covers up your handgun, however, you are now an instant criminal unless you have a permit from the government giving you permission to wear that jacket. So just as a visual cue, right now, I would be a law-abiding citizen, right now, I would be a criminal. That's the difference. There are many reasons our current permitting system does not work. First, this artificial distinction between open and concealed creates blatantly absurd situations. Imagine for a moment that you are a legal gun owner without a concealed carry permit. Imagine that you were just returning from the gun range and on your way home, you stop by the local grocery store. You choose to leave your handgun in your car, but you have a dilemma. Normally, when you leave valuable equipment unintended in your car, you would cover it up so that it doesn't attract theft. You wouldn't leave a laptop computer out in the open, but you are legally required to leave your handgun out in the open. If you put that handgun in your glove compartment, you are now a criminal. So we want to keep these handguns out of the hands of criminals, but we require you to leave it unintended in your car, out in the open for anyone to see bash in your window and steal it themselves. This is asking legal gun owners to abandon all common sense. Second, if our goal is to prevent violent criminals from accessing guns, the current permitting policy makes no progress towards that goal. If someone plans to commit a crime with a firearm, they have little incentive to seek a permit before committing the crime. This policy only impacts those who seek to remain law-abiding citizens, those who choose to participate with the permitting system. By erecting barriers to the legal rights of their arms, we disarm the very people who enhance public safety and empower those who with intent on doing us harm. Third, if our goal is to enhance public safety through firearms training, again, the permitting system makes little progress towards that goal. The state of Maine requires no training to carry a handgun. The state only requires training to wear a jacket while carrying a handgun. Add to this the fact that there is a wide range of quality in the firearms training available here in Maine. On the high side of the spectrum, there are true centers of excellence where everyone who takes a concealed weapons course spends the entire day with skilled trainers, learning the laws of the state, understanding gun safety, and receiving hands-on training with firearms. On the other side of the spectrum, you have training programs that some have come to call certificate mills. Students at these certificate mills are often in and out in two hours with no hands-on firearm training. Upon completion of either of these programs, a concealed carry permit is available, but the quality of the training has had a huge disparity. If an individual's only goal is a permit, they will likely go to a certificate mill where they may not learn anything, but they can ultimately get that permit. But if an individual's goal is to become a skilled gun owner who also has a permit, it will likely go to a center of excellence. So a permit is not a guarantee of high-level training. Furthermore, when we examine the results in states where constitutional carry is now in law, we find very positive trends showing that training actually increases when it is not mandated. Let's take Arizona as a case study. Arizona first began issuing concealed carry permits on September eighth, nineteen ninety-four. In order to qualify for an Arizona permit, applicants must complete a firearms safety training program as prescribed and demonstrate competence by providing adequate documentation of completion as prescribed. The permit costs sixty dollars. In the first sixteen years of Arizona's concealed carry permitting program, Arizona issued an average of about ninety-five hundred permits a year. This changed on July tenth, two thousand and ten, when constitutional carry took effect, making the permit optional for Arizona. Since constitutional carry took effect in two thousand and ten, Arizona has issued about fifteen thousand five hundred permits per year. More law-abiding gun owners in Arizona, sixty-three percent more, are seeking training and obtaining a permit after the permit became optional than when it was government mandated. The economics back up the data. When someone believes that there is a high barrier to carrying a gun, it acts as a deterrent to purchasing one. Once one has purchased a firearm, the individual considers the incremental cost of training rather than aggregating the cost into the purchase. Additionally, without a government-mandated minimum level of training, the student does not quickly reach a point where they are satisfied with their training, having fulfilled what the state said was enough. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not mention our main state constitution, which we all take an oath to uphold. In our Constitution's Declaration of Rights, Article One, Section sixteen, it declares, "Every citizen has a right to keep and bear arms, and this right shall never be questioned." In nineteen eighty-seven, under the leadership of then-Democrat Speaker of the House, John Martin, this constitutional language was strengthened to remove any doubt on this issue. Yet we require a permitting process to exercise that right, and that sure seems like questioning the right that shall never be questioned. I am proud to count Representative John Martin, who championed this constitutional language in nineteen eighty-seven, as a co-sponsor of this bill today. I am especially proud that ninety-six members of the Maine Legislature have sponsored this common sense proposal, including Republicans and Democrats and members of leadership in both parties. Today, I respectfully request that this committee, the vote ought to pass on this legislation. And I would also like to draw your attention to, I will not read it, but I've also distributed testimony from the Honorable Aaron Libby, who could not be here today. Aaron Libby represented the town of Waterboro and Lyman for two terms and was the sponsor of this bill twice in two of those terms. He could not be here today, but wanted to share his thoughts. And also, co-sponsor, Representative Randall Greenwood, who is busy in another committee and wanted his testimony submitted too, as well, and I have submitted that as well. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to take any questions unless you just want to get on and move on with it.
Senator Burns? Senator Chisowski?
I have nothing to say to my seat this morning today.
All right.
Thank you very much for the offer. You know, this committee has looked at this issue in my time for the last fifteen years. Have you made yourself aware of all the changes that we've made to what we're concerned about?
I've been very familiar with the discussions on this issue over the last few terms, but at the same time, we're still criminalizing people for wearing a jacket. And so until we get that, I'm sure this issue will continue to come forward.
Okay, well, we're going to get into that, some of my questions from that I've shared. But I would like to talk to you a little bit about this constitutional carry constitution act. I believe that I've heard the Constitution, federal and the state Constitution, many times. You chaired this committee for a long time and had this bill in front of us many times. And the Constitution says that here in the farm, what part of putting on a gun, putting it over your shoulder, walking down Main Street, does any of our laws prevent only hiding guns? So we have called this the hide-and-hill bill over the years, just wondering how you'd like to comment to that, because constitutional carry, you said you can carry a gun, you can only possess a gun, you could use a gun.
Well, I guess I would...
It doesn't say you can hide a gun.
Yeah, well, I guess I would, I think the best person to ask would be Representative John Martin, who drafted that language on this and who's a co-sponsor of this bill as to the original intent of that language. We can have disagreements about what the interpretation of the Constitution. I obviously feel that the Constitution is clear on this, but the constitutional questions aside, even if you don't accept the argument about the Constitution, there are many practical reasons as I've laid out that this simply makes practical sense.
Well, as a gun owner, as a gun owner for the last fifteen years, I think I know a little bit about guns. And I also know that John Martin also took great credit for getting his term limits, and now he has to build, get rid of the term limits. So everything changed around here. And John Martin's been...
I wouldn't contest that one.
...every bill, really, but... So I don't know how it's been carried, but the questions I'm going after are, we have the sealed weapons permit process that we've worked on a lot of years so that we can have reciprocating agreements with other states. And as I've learned on this committee over the years, that when we're not in sync with them on our laws, they will not reciprocate with us and we cannot reciprocate with them. We've worked very hard over the years of trying to build in for our sealed weapons permit holders, a way to travel around the country. And I'd like to know how this is going to impact that. That's, you know, one question. We can go on with that, or I can keep coming up with questions.
Sure. We currently, our permits are recognized in twenty-four states, and we are leaving that permitting system in place. The bill as written does not make any changes to the permitting system other than making it optional to carry inside the state's borders. Now, other states that have passed constitutional carry, they've kept their permitting system in place too. I have not seen any facts to indicate that they lost reciprocity with any states as a result of that, because the standards about around that, requiring that permit, remain the same. That remains unchanged. The only thing this addresses is the ability for people to carry in-state if they are a legal law-abiding gun owner who can already carry.
Well, that has arisen of a month, forty years. I'd like to challenge that by saying I could not go to any other state and not have to get their permit to carry, because I was in a state that didn't have...
Right, well, Vermont never has had a concealed carry permit system, because they've always just allowed people to carry in-state, so they don't have a permit to get.
We're only saying that they go along with the fact of the twenty-first national rule. So we have in our sealed weapons permit, good moral character. I would say it doesn't have good moral character. Matter of fact, I don't know if it did. You know, even if it really do, what we do. And without a process of a permit, a permitting process, we have then lost the ability to look at a person's moral character before giving them the authority to keep a hidden gun on the person.
Is that a question?
That is a question, it is a formative question.
Okay. So again, we're talking about permits to wear a jacket, not a permit to carry a gun. You can carry a gun, moral character, ill-moral character. I'm not too familiar with how that is defined. It seems like kind of weird language to me. But you can carry a handgun regardless of all that, currently in the state of Maine. So we're simply talking about the act of putting a jacket on.
Or, sir, if I might, I have a call to share, thank you. But as my seatmate might want to put a gun in her purse, has nothing to do with jackets. It has to do with hiding a gun. And that's what you're proposing, that everybody should be able to, at their whim, be able to hide a gun and go to the most anyplace with that hidden gun.
Well, I'm tempted to ask you a response question, but I know I'm the one being questioned, so I won't do that. I would just say, if we're concerned about people who are going to be hiding guns for nefarious purposes, why would we have any inclination to think that that person who's going to commit a crime with that gun in the first place is going to submit themselves to a permitting system to begin with? We're erecting barriers that prevent law-abiding citizens, people who would use these tools for self-defense, to be able to use them for self-defense. We're disarming the very people that we want to be armed, and we're doing nothing to address the people effectively who we have real concerns about. In fact, as we see in areas where the strictest gun control laws are, that's where the most violent crime exists. And in states with the strongest protections of the Second Amendment, that's where the least violent crime exists. Because when we create barriers for law-abiding citizens to be able to carry guns, we empower the criminals and we disarm the citizenry. And that's a backwards way of approaching the problem.
If I might continue, I'm sure...
Okay. That's a good idea. Senator Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. Thank you, Senator Braekey, for agreeing to bring forth a motion on a special bill. Appreciate that. I do want to ask you about a specific area that I've given you a couple months to think about. We had this discussion a whole two months ago, and that's training. I'm very encouraged by what I read in your testimony. This is factual about what has happened as far as people seeking permits and also training in Arizona. I certainly believe that our founding fathers, both of this country and our state, intended for us to have the right to bear arms. That's why it was number two in the Constitution of the United States. But I also believe that they probably, before they gave their sons and daughters guns to work, they were able to train. I don't think the two should be tied together, but I'm very interested in people being trained to properly handle weapons, whether it's concealed or open or not. That's why I posed the question and hoping you give us some thought as to how we might as a state encourage people to get proper training before they touch any legal weapon.
I'm absolutely, one hundred percent, yes, absolutely. I'm absolutely and one hundred percent agreeing with you that we all want people to receive training. And when we pass, there's no guarantee with future holds, but we can look to the past to see what has happened in other states. I think the case of Arizona, where they became a constitutional carry state, made the system optional, and the amount of training that people received, both the amount of people receiving training and the amount of training that those people received on a continual, lifelong basis, increased dramatically. That's Arizona. I, you know, this is one of the valuable things of having other states that have passed laws like this. We can look to those examples, and we can see what happened there. I would say, you know, the example of Arizona, it's very good picture of that. Without the artificial standard setting up from a government level saying, "At this moment in time, you have received enough training, you are a skilled gun owner," when you remove that arbitrary threshold, it becomes a continual process. People are more likely to see it as a continual process, honing their skills. And it's not a one-and-done, you take a class and now you're a skilled competent gun owner. I mean, especially when some of the classes that exist now are like the certificate ones that I mentioned, where you go, you don't get any hands-on training, and two hours in, you know, two hours in, you've got your, you can get your permit regardless of the training you can actually receive. So I'm very encouraged by the case of Arizona. I think we're going to see, if we pass this bill into law, I think we're going to see the amount of training that people receives increases, like we saw in Arizona.
Thank you, Senator.
Representative Laug?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Braekey, for bringing this bill forward. And I feel strongly about this bill.
I'd like to put it in as well, and I appreciate your...
One of the, Senator, can you tell me in the Constitution where it says how I should possess a firearm, whether, how I should carry it or not?
I think you're making absolutely good point there. The Constitution is a list of power, of enumerated powers that we give to the government, not a list of rights that we give to, that the government gives to the people. So unless it is prohibited in there, I don't see any way you can interpret it to say that people don't have the right to do it.
Representative Shaw? I have two questions.
Yes.
One is a follow-up to that. So concealed carry, you view as a prohibit, it prohibits us against the Constitution. Do you agree with any of the other things that prohibit you from carrying guns, saying being a felon? I mean, there's other prohibitions that are put on for people to carry, even to own a weapon.
Right.
Forget the Constitution carries. And then there's pieces in the federal law that...
And then there's pieces in the federal law that don't allow people to own guns, that we have a concealed weapons law, they seem to fall into, so it kind of is confusing. Or are you in agreement that you have the right to carry no matter what without restrictions, because you're faulting this restriction, but there's other restrictions? So that's one question. Are you in favor of those restrictions going away?
So thank you for your question. I think one of the very important principles of our form of representative democracy is we have due process. Your rights can be taken away from you. That is absolutely legitimate. Your rights can be taken away from you under due process of the law. So when we're talking about someone who's a convicted felon, they've undergone due process. They've had that right taken away through a court of law under due process. So I have no issue with that. And does that answer the question?
That gives me your point of view, so that you do believe there are places that you can restrict.
Yes, as long as we're following due process.
Was there a court, Supreme Court decision on whether or not this is a restriction that we're allowed to restrict?
I'm not familiar with that. I would say, according to the Tenth Amendment of the Constitution, I would think a lot of those, a lot of those issues would fall in the state's to determine. I'm not familiar with any Supreme Court cases at this point. I would be happy to look into it.
Well, for the work session, I'm sure we could have that brought up, if there's any decisions in Supreme Courts, any courts, as to whether or not this restriction is something that is allowed or seen as a restriction.
Could I add one thing very quickly?
I'm sure it can.
I do think it is, I think that sometimes it's very tempting to defer a lot to the judicial branch to interpret the Constitution for us. But I think the Constitution is also a document that any single citizen is entitled to open and read for themselves, and I think in many cases, it's very straightforward. I think sometimes we've seen, especially on the federal level, that sometimes the Constitution is explained away in some of the most ridiculous ways we can imagine to where, you know, interstate commerce means, you know, can mean that if you, as a famous court case once termed, that if you grow wheat or corn on your own property, then you're participating in interstate commerce and therefore can be regulated because you're not purchasing foreign or wheat from someone else. I mean, that's some of the ways the courts have interpreted things in very strange ways. So I would say, the Constitution is an accessible document that any citizen can open and read for themselves, and I would just, I would just put that forward as well.
Thank you. So my other question, my second question was, you brought up, one of the safest states was a state that had the loosest gun laws.
I would phrase it as the strongest Second Amendment protections, but I have a point all day.
Well, you, I think we're just interpreting it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're both saying the same thing.
Your point is well-taken.
Isn't the state of Maine one of the safest states with the lowest criminal activity per capita? Aren't we like second to maybe Vermont, who has this law?
Absolutely. Maine, because Maine does have very strong Second Amendment protections in place already. This is just one more where I'm hoping that we will put in place.
But we've been in that bracket, I think, for a long, long, long time, long before many states even change their laws. And I would think that maybe our laws are right, that we're, you know, to be criminally, at the criminal level per capita, that we may be at a point where we do it right. So that's just an opinion at this point.
I respect that.
I'm waiting to hear more and more people testify.
I would, I would say I'm just as inclined to trust the people of Maine to exercise their freedoms on this as the people of Vermont are able to. I don't think there's anything superior about the people of Vermont to the people of Maine, that people of Maine can't exercise this right responsibly.
Thank you very much. Senator DeSoto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I've been here seven years, and I think almost every long session, we've had a gun bill that has come in, and some of the same questions have arrived. When you wear a, let's say, a handgun in the open, you really don't need any training, far as I know, it's not recommended, not mandated.
Right.
As well as, there's really no background check unless the local police and/or other police know of that. And kind of bothers me, the other thing is, concealed weapon, we have to go through all this permitting and all this training, and of course, a revenue for the state to offset the cost of, 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 through the permit. I guess my question is, wouldn't it be beneficial for the state to also require the same thing of individuals to have open, I mean, open carry? It seems to me that if you're going to do background checks, it will be a lot safer. If you're going to do the proper training, it will be a lot safer. And on top of that, if you try for the permitting, it'd be a revenue for the state. I, just a question.
Well, I will say, the point's well taken. It would be outside the scope of this bill, but I'm happy to speak to it. Again, I would go back and point to the fact that every time we erect barriers to law-abiding citizens to be able to own and possess a handgun, if someone is really committed to committing a crime with a firearm, the law isn't going to be able to stop them from committing all that. There's always going to be a black market, no matter what we do. And what we are essentially doing is, we're creating barriers for people who have respect for the law, the people who are going to follow the law and aren't going to carry because they don't want to violate the law. And those are the very people who we want to be able to defend themselves and want to be able to use to be responsible firearm owners. So I guess I would just contest, I think we, I think we see in many of the states where there's the largest amounts of violent crime, we see that those are the places with the strictest gun control laws. And so I would suggest that, I think there's unintended consequences to that, but I appreciate the question. Thank you.
Representative DeSoto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator, I was curious about your comment that the Constitution is a document we can all read, any good law-abiding citizen can read it and interpret it. I guess I have two questions.